Good afternoon. My clock shows 1:01. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. This will be very brief. Are you ready in the back? All right, I think they're ready for us. All right, my clock shows 1:01 on January 24th of 2023. At this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding the following. Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551071 of the Texas Government Code, we anticipate beginning our regular session promptly at 2:00 p.m. And at this time, we will be in recess until 2 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to do work?
We are back adjourned. That was a very, very quick executive session. Thank you very much.
We can try it again in a moment.
But technically, I guess the Google clock says it's only 12:59. So, I guess this one's early, so now we're all right. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for the good reminder. Ms. Joy, you're fine. I have broke to executive session and now I've called us back into... To our interns, that's exactly how it's done every week. All right, thank you, Mayor Protem and Mr. Atkinson for the reminder. It is 1:00 p.m. And at this time, instead of moving into executive session, we will convene into work session to hear and discuss presentations regarding our proposed field services summer program. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. If you don't mind if we get you to switch the inputs, we'll put it up on the screen. Council members, you have a little flyer each at your place. Kind of walk through an idea we have to enhance and really to entice people to come to work for us in our field programs. So to start, I want to talk a little bit about what we are doing already to try to increase employment, reduce vacancies. Council was gracious and approved our CDL apprenticeship program, that is for our B-drivers. We started that looking at solid waste. You can see the results that we have had to date on the screen. We've gained nine net new drivers. We have four that are currently in the class. At the same time, we've been successful in hiring another four who already had their licenses. So, solid waste is doing good there. We're going to move that program and focus on existing city employees now who can benefit, who can potentially promote if they also have their CDLB. And you see the next four are three in parks, one in fleet. We expect to come back to you in the next month and a half or so and talk about converting that to a CDLA program. So there is a group of our workers that do need an A-class license. We're very pleased with our contractor with South Plains College. We'd like to keep that going. Quick reminder, that is being funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. Council has given us quite a few other things to help with recruitment. Over the last two years, we have had a significant increase in compensation, and that is top, bottom, left, right throughout the entirety of the city. City has a very, very, very good benefits program. We have our new employee education assistance program, which actually, the first semester of that is underway now, and again, CDL program. Where that takes us is to start looking kind of at our next step. What's the next group we need to work with? So, all in, the city's vacancy rate right now is 7.8%. We have steadily been able to trend it down, but it is moving very, very slowly. Big challenge we have is in field workers. The apprentice program is helping, but I've still got 49 true openings scattered throughout public works, parks, stormwater utility water, wastewater, and fleet. So, what can we do to work on that? Would suggest that we start this program, we target 17 to 21-years of age. So we're looking at those soon to graduate and those that maybe just have graduated and really haven't found a spot to begin their career. Thirty-six positions, seven-week duration, that fits exactly between the end of school and prior to school activities starting back up. We would have them for 40 hours a week. We would pay them weekly. Traditional city payroll is every two weeks. Target 1250 to 13 an hour. Council, I am leaning heavily towards the $13 an hour. For one, I'm competing with fast food that's more than that. But the goal of this whole deal, number one, is to educate and to show people what opportunities are out there, and most importantly, when it's over, to see if we can get some of them to come to work for us. What would it look like? We have five, excuse me, five major divisions that are participating. You see them on your screen there. We will group our participants into smaller areas and rotate them through these divisions. We'll certainly let them start with where they wish to be, but we want to show them just as quick and as broad a group as we can. One thing we'll do different, on Fridays, which for them will be paydays, we will bring them in at lunch, feed them a box lunch, and we'll have city employees come and talk to them. Many of these are city employees that are in leadership positions today that truly started as a field worker. So they have built a career and they've done very well for themselves. When we started talking about who those people would be, I have more than we can use for the seven weeks. So we've got a lot of tremendous employees that want to help with this. The very final Friday, the seventh one, we're going to talk more specifically about, okay, what happens if you become a city employee? What's out there for you? You've seen the jobs. We've showed those to you over the prior time. But what's a pension? How does it work? Do some examples, put some math on the board. Deferred compensation, we'll be able to run scenarios for them. How does vacation accrual work? Sick leave? What else is available? Come to work for us, and if you need a CDL, we have a program to do that. If you wish to eventually continue education, whether that's the next day or the next year, we have a program. Many of the workers they will shadow also have either certificates or licensure. We'll talk about how that can benefit them. Really paint a picture that is much more broad than, here's a job posting, this is what we want you to do. More of a, you come to work for us, this is a picture of your future career. Show that to them. Cost, right now, we estimate this at $150,000. That includes being able to do our Friday lunches. City will provide the personal protective equipment, the uniform shirts if needed. We can get that through our regular contracts. Some minor incidental cost. And council, we still have American Rescue Plan Act job training dollars available. So I'd propose we start there and use that for the program. Again, you see the goal, we want to educate a future employee and future workforce. Really going to be a 101-style deal, and I'll briefly touch on that in a moment. We've had a lot of luck. If we can get people to see what we have and have fun, maybe we can get them to come and learn about opportunities, you know, and work for us. So, as we begin to bring them in, we will start them out. First day, all of them together, here's the big picture of what you will have over the next seven weeks, who the city is, what we do, why do we do it, things like that. Day two, we will keep them together, and we will set up kind of a field demonstration, very much like you do in the 101 program, where they just get a quick look at all of it all at once. Day three forward, we divide them up, start working them through the program, talk to them on Fridays, and ideally gain some future employees. So, Mayor, with that, be glad to take any questions, comments, suggestions you may have.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I just want to commend you because I think this is a great opportunity. I got to see the students with the Hype program, and it was, they were so intrigued and interested. So I think that's positive. And I do also appreciate that our own city employees are getting paid more than these students that will be coming in at these levels. Because I think that's really important, that we are assuring them that, you know, we're also vested in them or interested in them.
Yep, and interested in getting them help.
Mm-hmm. I think that's the best part.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. I think that it's exciting that the city is beginning to market itself in some fashion and allowing people to know who we are and what we are. Sometimes they only see certain things within the city, but grabbing some young people and allowing them to be a part, I think, is huge. One question I do have, we were talking about the employee educational program, that we have some participants. How many do we have who have actually taken advantage of that program?
I can't pull that up while I've got my screen on. Not quite as many as I wanted. Somewhere around 10 to 12 for this first semester.
Okay.
And it's a pretty good sampling from associate's degree to bachelor's degree to master's and more.
Because that just kind of lets us know the interest in all. And, you know, to get started, you know, it may take us a little bit, but just to have it available for folks, opportunity is kind of the thing that makes the difference for folks. So I appreciate the work as well. I appreciate the focus on the citizens in the community and wanted to bring them in to be a part.
Thank you.
Ms... I think the same question. Dr. Wilson?
I was about to ask, I think the same question is, how are we going to actively recruit for this program? Are we going out to schools and into the public?
Yes, yes, thank you for that. Had a chance to visit with one of our three superintendents already, extremely favorably received. I will talk to the two other large districts as well, maybe can get that done this week. Have had a chance to visit with a very active pastor in the East Lubbock community, talked to him. I do think there's opportunity for those 19, 20, 21-year-olds to reach out to them. It'll go out on all our social, it'll go out on all our web postings. I think we'll have a pretty broad brush. As I continue to go through the various social clubs and business clubs, I'll talk to them about it. We talked about the CDL program in a couple of town halls that were really focused more on our budget, and we picked up some interest from doing that. So we will do any and all of it.
Mr. McBrayer?
Yes, if you remind me again, how many are in it? And also, will there be an opportunity for them to step right out of the apprenticeship into a job? I mean, will there be an employment opportunity waiting for them at the end of the apprenticeship?
Target is 36 participants. There's not magic just working with the division directors. It kind of seems to be what we can get our hands around first time. As far as jobs, when we finish that Friday, they'll be given job applications for anything that's open, you know, that they're qualified to put in for. And because we have set up step programs and that CDL program helped move that forward, we hire them in under where they're going to end up and then get them what they need to step into the full position.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Anyone else have any questions or comments regarding agenda item 1.1? All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. All right, with Mayor Protem's permission, we will now have the aforementioned language being read in for executive session. We will now move into executive session and be in recess until 2:00 p.m. All right, well, it is 2:04, and we're calling this meeting back into order. We have been in executive session, and we will jump right into our regular open session. And we will first begin with our ceremonial items, which is our invocation. And today, we're honored to be led by Pastor Evan Havens from With the Faith Church. Pastor, if you would come forward. If you would all please stand and remain standing for our pledges. If you would pray with me. Father God, we thank you so much for the men and women gathered here to lead our city, to make decisions on our behalf. Lord, we pray that you would bless them as they make decisions for us. We pray that you would give them divine wisdom. We ask over their families, that you would bless their families, their children, their grandchildren, their brothers, sisters, moms and dads. Lord Jesus, that you would touch them, that you would bless them, and that you would help them to have peace in this time. Lord God, we ask that in everything that is said and done here at this meeting, that you would be honored, that you would be glorified, that you would be exalted. Father, just like Jabez prayed in the Book of First Chronicles, Lord, that you would bless Lubbock, Texas indeed, that you would enlarge our territory, that your hand would be upon us, that you would keep us from evil, that we might not cause pain. And we thank you that you have blessed this city and that you're going to continue to do so. And Father, I just pray that every word that's spoken here that would be directed by you and that you would help us as we continue to move throughout this year, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, ma'am.
If you would please join us as we say our pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have citizen comments. According to the local Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting regarding any matter posted on the city council agenda shall complete a sign-up form, and that citizen will be given the opportunity to make comments regarding a posted agenda item. Today, we have two parties that have signed up for public comment. As you come forward, when I call your name, please remember to state your name into the microphone here at the podium and then give your address and let us know which agenda item you're commenting on. First, we will start with Mr. Alan Carson.
Good afternoon, and thank you. Alan Carson, my address is 8302 County Road 6920 here in Lubbock. And I signed up, and then after visiting, I'm coming to speak in favor of item 7.4, and I believe I'll wait until later to speak to that, if that's okay.
I believe, just getting clarification for, I missed that, Mr. Carson, but I think this is going to be your opportunity to speak.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Go ahead, you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a 30-second timer.
Excellent. Can I grab my notes?
You may proceed, sir.
All right, thank you. I am president of West Texas State Bank here in Lubbock. Most of you probably have not heard of us. We opened a loan production office here in March of last year, and we have now made application with the Texas Department of Banking to open a full-service branch here in Lubbock. I served the Texas Department of Banking for about seven years, and then I've been a banker, a commercial banker here in Lubbock for about 20 years. I believe that there may be a little opposition to our acquisition of 7202 slide, that possibly it might increase traffic flow on Slide Road, and so I wanted to speak to that directly. Myself and a few others owned Commercial State Bank here in Lubbock. You might be familiar with that. We were located at 82nd and Milwaukee. There, we had a 9,420-square-foot building, and we had four drive-through lanes. We realized probably three or four years into that bank that we had overbuilt. We were way too, way too large. We sold Commercial State Bank to American Momentum Bank about three years ago and signed a non-compete agreement. Now that that's up, we've purchased a small bank in Snyder and would like to open a branch here in Lubbock. I think there might be a little misconception into our intent for that large building on Slide Road. We are planning on having a 2,790-square-foot branch in the back of that building. Dr. McCarthy is in front on the bottom floor, and we're planning on taking the back space and adding a couple of drive-through lanes and an ATM. I feel like I can speak pretty definitively to the cause of adding traffic. We were at 82nd and Milwaukee for 13 years. When we sold that branch, I had 100 million in assets in our Lubbock location. We had four drive-through lanes. On rare occasion, we might have two people in our drive-through lane at the very end. Banking's changed over the years. Most of our customers use online banking. We have mobile deposit, we have remote deposit. I would say 80% of our customers were commercial, and most of those, commercial real estate. And so we don't have a high volume of consumer traffic. And so our teller lines that are being proposed, I would be shocked if we added one or two cars to the traffic volume on Slide Road. It's just, it would not be a thing. Once again, a very small community bank. I have about 20 million in assets right now, and it took me 11 years to get to 100. So I feel like that we're, you know, by taking that space, we would not add any traffic to Slide Road.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. All right, next, we have Mr. Tyler Gentry, also here to speak on agenda item 7.4.
Good afternoon. Tyler Gentry, 4,005 76th Street, Lubbock, Texas. At the last council meeting, we were asked to clarify the number of drive-through lanes, and we wanted to report back to you all that it is two drive-throughs, one commercial, one personal, as well as an ATM at the end of the two drive-through lanes. I also believe the concern is traffic, and I think Mr. Carson did an excellent job of describing the volume and the traffic that is there. So if you all have any other questions for me, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. All right, next, move to the minutes. This is a minutes from December 13th, 2022, regular city council meeting. I could have a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. A second. All in favor of approval of agenda item 5.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Any opposed by like sign. 5.1 carries 7-0. All right, before we move on to the consent agenda with permission of council, if there's no objection, we have some parties that are present from out of town that are going to attempt to catch a flight out. So we're going to move to our regular agenda item, agenda items 7-9, 7-10, and 7-11. Is there finance resolutions regarding our TIPS?
Mayor, if I might, it's items 7.6 through 7.8 ordinances.
I think I circled the wrong ones. 6, 7, and 8 instead of 9, 10, 11. We'll take those up together later. Yes, thank you. So for clarification, 7, 6, 7, 7, and 7, 8. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Good to be with you today. So this, today, these three ordinances are typically referred to as parameters ordinances. These are the final step, the final council action in the debt issuance process. It's been a long process that we've gone through. Remind you, we've talked about this, for one, on the GO side, you know, you know the process on that one. On the CO side, we went, and the water wastewater revenue debt side, we've been through the budget process with you, presented the items that we felt warranted a debt issuance. We came back to you for the reimbursement resolution to go ahead and start on those processes. And then back in December, we came to you with, called the notice of intent. So we've done the notification to the public, that time period has passed. Without hearing any opposition to these, we're ready to come to you now for the parameters ordinance to get these issuances started. So there will be three ordinances in the air. We will do all of these at the same time, a little bit of efficiencies to be gained in the cost of issuance if we do all of these all at once in one issuance. So there will be three parts. Today, we have our financial advisor, Matt Bowles, from RBC Capital Markets here with us to go over the plan of finance. Mr. Jerry Kyle with OREG is here if there are any bond-related legal questions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Matt Bowles to go through the plan of finance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Costlich. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Costlich? Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Bowles?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Ah, there we go. Good to see you all today, and thank you for that introduction. I didn't know, Mayor, if you wanted to answer, to go through questions first, or do you want me to go through my presentation quickly? You asked for questions, and I want to make sure I didn't get in the way of that.
If you would like to go through your presentation quickly, that'd be great.
Great, thank you. So as Mr. Costlich said, I was last here in December. We had the chance to talk about not only the plan of finance, but the state of the market, and I was able to report then, and I can report now, that it just continues to get better. And by better, I mean less volatility, so that it's more measurable. We have the ability to get in the market at more favorable times, and I generally like the direction that we're headed in terms of relative rates, and I wanted to speak to that very quickly. And on this first page, we do that with some commentary in the upper left-hand corner. And the basic premise of this is that inflation seems to be heading in the right direction. In fact, it is heading in the right direction, but it's all relative, right? It's, as we sit here today, things can change, but we've had a couple of really nice reads on inflation, and as I said, they are generally headed in the right direction, and by that I mean downward. And so the pressures that you might feel from Federal Reserve action or general open-market action has been lessened fairly significantly, to the point where we are looking at Fed Fund future pricing of possible 25 basis points instead of the usual 50 or 75 basis-point hikes that we saw throughout 2022. To get to a terminal rate, which is the top-end rate in the short end of the curve, that's going to be less than what they thought it might otherwise be now. That all can change tomorrow, and I recognize that, but we've got almost 45 days of good positive feel in the marketplace, and so I generally like that. I'll spike that point in the lower left-hand corner on this page. This is the municipal market data. This is our Dow Jones. We talk about this every time we get together. The green line on this curve is where we sit today, so this is one to 30 years. And the last time we visited, that green line was really bumping up very closely on a long-term basis against the 15-year average. So we've got a discernible spread there now to the 15-year average. And again, the key for us is the volatility is really controllable now. We don't see the mad swings that we did in 2022, and that's, again, a very nice place for us to be in terms of getting into the market. Very quickly, I wanted to speak to national volume. National volume last year was down about 20% from its five-year average. We see that same paradigm playing out in 2023. We think the market will be well below the five-year average, probably in the 20% range. For you all, a good, solid AA credit issuer with really good credit and policies and profiles and a very recognizable name in the marketplace, I think that will be well-received. There's just not enough paper, municipal bond paper, to satisfy appetite, and so that, I think, bodes well for what you all will be doing. And we're going to move fairly quickly from this point forward, and I'll get into timing in just a little bit. Just to remind you, and this is another index, I only bring this up because I bring it up every time, and I think it provides a really wide, broad swath of time and macro view of the market that we operate in. The Bond Buyer Index is highlighted at the top half of this page, goes all the way back to 1961. 80% of the time since 1961, rates have been higher according to this index, so it's a really favorable time to be in the market. It's not what it was 18 months ago at the height of the pandemic. I don't know if we'll ever go back to that place, but in general, broad macro terms, this is a very good time to be in the marketplace. Mr. Costlich spoke briefly about the three instruments that you all would be issuing, your general obligation bonds, which were authorized in the 2022 bond election, a very small certificate of obligation, and then some money for the water wastewater system. Those individual projects are Those individual projects are highlighted on, highlighted on this page. I won't go through each one of those, but they're there for your public consumption. And then, just a little bit about the summary of assumptions, these have not changed but for one. The last time we spoke, we were using current market rates at that time, plus fifty basis points. And now that we're closer to the end, we've narrowed that down to twenty. So, we've got a little bit of cushion in here, and we hope that we will operate well within that, and we'll keep you posted as we go forward. And then, we've got three consecutive pages here that highlight the preliminary results of those financings based off of market rates plus twenty percent, the first of which on Page Seven is the general obligation issuance in 2023. In the middle of the page, where you find the statistical information, you'll see that there's a highlighted row there, the all-in true interest cost of three seventy-five, so back out the twenty basis points, and that's a rate of three point five five percent. And then, the debt service payments on the right-hand side that are a result of that. And then, the second page, which is on Page Eight, with respect to the plan of finance around the certificates, in the middle page, in the middle portion of the page, rather, three seventy-seven, so you're looking at a three fifty-seven, which, with the debt service payments on the right-hand side for the certificates. And then, finally, the water wastewater projects, which have a slightly lower rating, given the revenue feature and the, and not tax-backed, not being tax-backed, have a rate of three eighty-six. So, is that eighty-six? Three eighty-six? So, that would be three sixty-six. I apologize. We were talking about using glasses earlier, and there they come. One thing I'll make a point of here, in your debt service payments on the right-hand side of the page, is that the city is in the process of updating the rate model around your water wastewater system, and to the extent that it will accommodate it, we look to shorten the amortization of these bonds up a certain amount. I don't yet know what that'll be, but it could be a couple of years, and so, we'll work with Mr. Costelich and your staff to see if that will be something that we can accommodate. Obviously, rates being lower will help. The rate model being more robust will also help, so we'll marry those two up to see if we can't shorten this up in some way. All three series of bonds have a standard ten-year optional par call for refunding, so that if we get into the future, and that is a possibility, we will take a look at those if and when rates should decline to that point. And then, finally, just the timetable. Mr. Costelich spoke of our meeting in December. We're here to ask for your consideration of a parameters ordinance authorizing the issuance of these obligations. That ordinance contains certain parameters that must be met, met for a delegated authority to your staff for us to move forward. We're going to hold rating meetings. It says the twenty-seventh here. We've actually moved that to the thirtieth. There will be some conversation amongst your, your administrative staff, along with other folks with the two rating agencies that we'll be using, and then, we'll look to price the obligations on or about the fifteenth of February. And at that point, we'll have final results. We'll get that to Mr. Costelich, and I know he'll send around a nice summary to you so that you know where we come out on this. And with that, Mayor, I'm open for questions.
All right, any questions this time? Ms. Joy.
Mr. Bowles, these are, the three different funds are twenty years, correct?
Correct.
And what I'm hearing you say about the water and wastewater is there's a possibility that we might reduce the number of years, which would save us some interest.
Correct.
Going forward. When would you, do you think we will have an, an idea on that, before February the fifteenth?
Well, it will have to be before February fifteenth, because we lock rates that day, so I would guess in the first part of February. I'll leave that to Blue.
We should. By, by the, by the beginning of February, we'll, we'll have an updated model and be able to, to plug in these, adjust those years up and down, see, see where we can go.
And for, for those who may not recall what you told us the last time you were here, are we better in our interest rate today than we were when you were here last?
Yes, we are. We are better.
And you, that parameter that you're talking about, would you remind us what the parameter calls for?
I might call Jerry up to go through the parameters. I know they're stated, I think, in your, in your board packet there, but I know you want to hear them publicly, so.
I've got other people here who.
Yep.
They don't, they don't.
Do you want to go through the parameters here?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Jerry Kyle with OREG Harrington in Suckliff. So, the parameters in the ordinance basically provide a not-to-exceed-principle amount, and then, a not-to-exceed-maturity of, of twenty-one years, just to provide a little buffer there. And then, the bonds cannot exceed the legal limit. So, they're basically just cross-reference the maximum permitted by law, but, I mean, the rates are way below that, so.
What's the maximum permitted by law now?
It's actually fifteen percent.
Okay. Yeah, very good. So, well, thanks to both of you. I'm happy that at least the rates are coming down. They're not as good as they were in January of 2022, but certainly better than, I think, than what a lot of us had anticipated. So, thanks, and let's get that done, so we can get these projects done.
That's correct.
Sounds good.
All right, does anybody else have any questions of Mr. Kyle, Mr. Costelich, or Mr. Bowles? All right, with that, we'll bring 7.6, 7.7, 7.8 in as one, and I'd, so these gentlemen can get back home, hopefully, have a motion to approve 7.6, 7.7, and 7.8. Thank you, Ms. Joy. We have a second from Ms. Patterson Harris. All right, any further discussion on those items? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 7.6, 7.7, and 7.8, please say aye.
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 All opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, gentlemen. If y'all need to get out of here, we certainly appreciate it. All right, next, we'll move back to our consent agenda, which is Agenda Item Six. We have a few that we are going to pull. Specifically, we refer to six, Agenda Item 6.10. We're going to pull that one from the agenda and move that to February the fourteenth. Is that correct, Mr. Atkinson? Six point ten?
Yes, February fourteenth.
We'll move six point ten to our next regularly scheduled council meeting. And now, I'll turn your attention to Agenda Item 6.4 and turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item six point, six point four might look slightly familiar. Back on December the sixth, we came to you and asked to approve a deed, that deed being transferring a parcel, primarily a tennis court, currently owned by Lubbock Independent School District, immediately adjacent to May Simmons, to transfer that to the city so that we could redevelop it into a parking lot. Council approved that at that time. Councilmember Patterson Harris and I later that month went to the school board meeting. They also approved that transaction with one change, and the change is there's a reverter in the deed now from the school district, and it says, if we cease to use that for a park, or I mean, for a parking lot and a public purpose, it will go back to the school district. Substantive change, so with that, we are representing to you that same transaction for your consideration. Take any questions.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't, I don't have any questions. I just, I'm so excited about this actually taking place. I want to make sure that the citizens actually follow, follow this as it happens, as we continue to move forward, to draw attention to it, because it's really going to make a huge difference for that particular area and the many events that take place. So, that's all. I just wanted to be above board and showing folks, you know, that we have this because we had, there were some adjustments. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. All right, well, next move to six point five. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. We'll start on Item 6.5. This is authorizing basically a transfer from your Central Business District TIF over to Lubbock Experience, Inc. Lubbock Experience, Inc. is the nonprofit that will be in charge ultimately of accumulating all of the necessary funds and then constructing the downtown park. It's the same model that was previously used to manage the construction, the fundraising associated with the tornado memorial. This one wraps kind of in a big circle. I will do my best to explain it, but please feel free to answer questions. Originally, the commitment out of the downtown TIF was to fund design of the project and to fund the demolition of the old Lubbock Power and Light building. In 2021, the Helen Jones Foundation and the CH Foundation gave to this project each five hundred thousand dollars. Since then, they've donated another two and a half million dollars, but the relevant grants are those from 2021. They are relevant because they had an expiration date. Those funds had to be expended by December thirty-first of 2022. So, in the simplest version I can put out, with the permission of those foundations, and those letters are in your backup, the foundation dollars were used on the design, the abatement, the demolition cost, and the budgeted TIF dollars then were not. So, that leaves that balance over there, TIF is asking to transfer the money they had committed over now to Lubbock Experience. The, the net comes out the same. It's not adding new budgeted TIF dollars to the project, so hope that helped, and I'll try to answer any questions.
All right, any questions, Mr. Atkinson, on six point five? Ms. Martinez Garcia.
Just to emphasize, these are not city funds. These are grant funds for the public's purpose of being aware. Is that true or correct?
It, it is. I might expand just a little bit. The, the physical dollar we're talking about is a downtown TIF dollar. It is not a general revenue of the city, and it is not a dollar that can be used anywhere other than within the boundaries of the downtown TIF. It is, these dollars are replacing the grant dollars that were previously spent to meet the timing deadline.
All right, any other questions on six point five?
Atkinson, what would the addition?
Mr. McBrayer? Sorry it popped up. All right, Mr. McBrayer.
So, the million dollars now coming from the TIF will be used for what in particular?
It, it will go to the construction of that park, which is where the grant dollars would have been spent originally.
And then, the other two and a half million dollars you mentioned, I mean, what's the total cost are we looking at for that park?
Let me run through that. That's a good question. So, the total all-in estimate on the park, counting for inflation and counting for some endowment-type money, is about twelve point four million dollars. Five and a half of that has been raised to date. Two is in the original funding from the TIF, again, no change or increase. Three and a half has come from the foundations, your two local foundations, and the fundraising committee in charge of accumulating the rest of those dollars now has some very significant asks out to the public.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All right, next move to six point six. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. Item six point six is a requested amendment to an existing contract with Fries and Nichols, Inc. The current contract with Fries and Nichols is for the engineering related to our ongoing unpaid road improvement projects. The amendment specifically is a request to add thirty thousand, three hundred and six dollars to that contract, and that is solely for topographic survey work that we need on projects such as Wausau Avenue, portions of Twenty-first, Twenty-second, and Twenty-Sixth Street. We are not extending the time. We are requesting to purchase these additional services.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions on six point six? All right, well, next move to six point seven. Mr. Atkinson?
Item six point seven, now, because we've taken your action on the bond dollars, this is a continuation of the 2022 street bond project. Specifically, this is a contract with Lockwood, Andrews, and Noonam. The contract is unique to East Eighty-second and the South Martin Luther King Boulevard segments. You may recall back when we presented to you our overall implementation schedule, these two segments will be built at the end of the bond. We are asking to start the engineering, the right-of-way acquisition immediately. That one's going to be, it's got some challenges. There's some drainage issues on Martin Luther King's side, some right-of-way on the East Eighty-second side. We'd like to get that going and be ready on the schedule we had previously presented.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
Thank you. Again, it, that was kind of one of my pulls. I just want to keep an eyeball on it. So, because of the fact that it has some challenges, it will not be something at the very beginning of this entire process. I want to keep an eye on it for the citizens who know that it has been approved and make sure that we don't let it slip by the wayside. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. All right, any other questions on six point seven? All right, we'll move to six point eight. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Item six point eight is an amendment to a previously approved cost-sharing and payment agreement. This is for the development of Ash Avenue from Sixty-sixth to South Loop 289. Originally approved one year ago, there are three parties involved in this one, the City of Lubbock, Lubbock Power and Light, and Ford Development. Now that that project is ready to go out a bit, out to bid, the cost escalation has pushed it way past where it was originally funded. The item before you today, then, is to adjust that cost upwards to a grand total of eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. It was originally funded at four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Any questions of Mr. Atkinson on six point eight? Ms. Joy?
I understand that the city just has a portion of, of that, but where does the excess cost, where do we pay that? From what source?
The, the city's portion of that cost is coming out of some, I believe, unpaid roadway dollars that we have, and it is currently an unpaid roadway.
And we have enough money to do that?
We do. We don't have enough money to do it again.
Okay.
We have enough money to do this.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions on six point eight? All right, well, next move to six point nine. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Item six point nine is the purchase of large valves. It is not the purchase of the installation. This is getting these valves ordered and having them shipped in, because we need them for a pending project. This part of the project is at what we call Pump Station Number Four. Pump Station Number Four is the one that's kind of got the buried dome on it, on I-27, right next to Municipal Hill. We are replacing valves that have really kind of outlived their life and are not functioning as they should. We recently had a problem on the west side of the interstate, directly across from the pump station, and it was a massive effort to be able to go around valves that wouldn't shut off so that they could fit what they are doing. And just kind of to give you an idea of the scale, one of these valves is forty-two inches in diameter, so they're, they're very, very large. There are five of them that are thirty-six inches. The smallest is two feet, twenty-four inches. So, again, the purchase of these is merely for the item itself. There will be a future construction project that will include the installation thereof.
All right, any questions on six point nine of Mr. Atkinson? All right, and finally, Item six point one-two.
Item six point one-two, for some that have heard this before, it's likely to be a welcome discussion. Ms. Brenda Haney and her team continue to work, come up with a way to do a meaningful and viable recycling program. This item in front of you today is step one. There will be many more that have to come behind this. Step one is the application to the Environmental Protection Agency for a grant in the amount of four million dollars. And what that would do in simpler terms is help us construct an appropriate facility. We would partner with both the region in order to build enough volume to try to make it viable long-term, as well as a private-party processor to actually handle that. Location, should all of this come to pass, would be at the site of your new transfer station and would fit well together. All of our space planning has a holder for it.
Any questions on six point one-two of Mr. Atkinson? All right, Ms. Joy?
You mentioned that this first grant. You mentioned that this first grant is, could be for $4 million, but it's just the first of a process. What comes next?
If this grant is funded, certainly we would have the real estate by that point. We're requiring that for the purpose of the transfer station. Working with the region, which in our case would likely extend into eastern New Mexico, getting all of those put together, as well as working with a private processor to bring them onboard to do it. You are still a significant period of time out for making it happen.
And an estimation of that significant amount of time?
Well, I would hate to do that, but I know that Brenda's in the audience, and we'll ask her to do so.
Okay.
Mayor, if that's all right with you?
Yes, don't answer that question if you don't know the answer. You're subject to cross-examination.
Thanks. I just want to clarify the question, Ms. Joy. Councilwoman Joy, you were asking on the timeframe of the grant, the project. We are two years from, or one year at least, from breaking ground once we get the land acquired for the transfer station, because it'll take us that long to do the permitting process and the design process. We are estimating about two years of construction. It's a big facility, large spans, that have to be specially constructed, so it'll take us, we're looking at two to three years from today.
Okay. We currently recycle at different locations and pick up, we have someone that we contract with to take our recycling. Is that correct?
We work with a local company that takes, we haul all those materials to them that we collect separately at our drop-off sites, both the Attendant and the satellite drop-off sites. We take those materials, carry them, one material at a time, if you will, so plastics all in one load, aluminum all in another load. We take those over there, they bale them, and then they sell those to market.
So how will that, this possibility here, how will that improve the process we have now?
So they are limited in what they can manage from a capacity standpoint, just because that's not their number-one business. They are in the business of taking large pieces of metal and making smaller pieces of metal and selling it that way. So they're doing, they've been great partners and great to work with. If we were to try to roll this out and expand it into working with commercial customers or doing something more wholesale through our residential customer base, it just would be more than they could manage. So this would give us an opportunity then to have somebody that could process those materials for us. When they come in, collected all from a curbside, all mixed together, they can sort them into those individual materials, bale them en masse, and put them out to market.
When you say we contract with another company, we pay them to do?
We actually share a little bit in revenue with them. So for the little bit that they do sell, we get some of that revenue back from that. They get enough money to cover their expenditures for doing that work for us, and then we get a little, little bit of revenue back on the back end of the sell of those materials. It's just not a huge volume of materials, so it's, and it's not a, you know, a huge, with small volume, kind of small revenue, which means we get very little back in return for that.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I just want to thank you for being proactive with this. I think it's important as you're navigating through this process. It's a lot of work to undertake, and for you to even think about that, I think that speaks volumes of your department, and I appreciate when our staff goes to the lengths to do that. So thank you.
No, my pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
I'll try this again.
My understanding from something you told us, I think previously, was that the closest large-scale, we'd have to haul it off to the Dallas area or something for a large scale. So by bringing in these other areas in eastern New Mexico, we'll be able to do that here. That's required for us to handle or to build such a facility as this. We need to have a large volume come in to make it feasible. Is that right?
Right. The City of Lubbock wouldn't generate enough materials to really support a project of this magnitude. But we are known as a recycling desert in this part of West Texas or this part of Texas because there's just not anything within a reasonable amount of transportation. So we're looking at 350 miles, so either to the Dallas-Fort Worth area or into far into New Mexico to be able to process these materials. So this would provide something here for the region. It would actually better serve some of eastern New Mexico, as Mr. Atkinson pointed out, because we're within a couple hours of them. But this reaches up, you know, if you draw a couple-hour radius around Lubbock, that gets, which is a reasonable transportation distance, for transport distance for these types of materials, that gets up to Amarillo, it gets into eastern New Mexico, it touches down in the middle in Odessa area, and almost to Seymour to the, to the east.
Will become like a regional recycling center again.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. Ms. Haney, I just have this question, looking at this project, and would, my question is, would this allow us to expand some of our recycling that we actually do at this time and maybe to include some other things?
It would not necessarily add materials, but it may modify the way we would be able to collect those materials.
Okay, all right.
Does that make sense? So we could pick up a lot more volume.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're off the hook.
Okay.
All right, counsel, now at this time entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda 6.1 through 6.21 exclusive of Agenda Item 6.10. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of 6.1 through 6.21 exclusive of 6.10, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries seven, zero. All right, next we will move to our regular agenda. At this time, we will begin with public hearings on Agenda Items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. Without objection of counsel, we'll conduct one public hearing for these, these three items. 7.1, 7.2, 7.3. All right, this time, we will open up the public hearings for Agenda Items 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to any of these agenda items, you may step forward now. If you step forward, please state your name and your address. Again, those wishing to speak in opposition of 7.1, 2, or 3. All right, seeing none, I will move to open up the public hearing to anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.1, 7.2, or 7.3.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. I'll try to make it brief. We have this little piece of land, I'm sorry, Chris Berry, I know this routine, 7207 91st Street.
Which one are you speaking on?
7.1.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. This is an area that we have developed with one of our investor partnerships. This land had been vacant for 12, 13 years, and we finally able to get a product and develop some good homes, some affordable homes out there. And then this little triangle piece along the tech stop frontage and some awkward right-of-way from Tulane that was deeded way back in the 50s, kind of left this weird, weird triangle piece. So we've been in conversation with our investor friend and came up with the idea of trying to get some kind of garden home there. He has a property management group that he just wants to be a good place for them to be located to manage that area for him. He's got a few other homes with some different builders just adjacent to us. So we said, you know what, we'll go see how everything plays out. We haven't had a whole lot of conversation. The intent is a garden office would be something similar to some of the homes out there, just something kind of nice, a little smaller for property management, but, so here we are, trying to utilize that little weird triangle piece of land, so be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Or Ms. Joy?
Those, I don't know if they're residences or not, that I see in the pictures are next to this request for the GO.
Yes, ma'am.
That he owns?
We currently own that property. We're trying to deed that to him because he's got that property management, and he's managing all the properties over there as far as landscape goes with some of his investor partners. And it wasn't the right shape to fit one of our homes on there, but if we did a garden office, you know, obviously we could draft that architecturally to fit that property and meet the minimum parking spaces. So we were going to try to get this zone garden office so he could try to do a small garden office to house his property management group.
Well, GO is certainly appropriate there against the loop, and I wondered how in the world R2 was going to work there personally.
Yes.
Hopefully that will work out for you.
I can't, other than some weird park, I can't think of another better use for that weird piece. And the Tulane right-of-way kind of creates some, some issues there, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
When you describe garden office, I just want to make sure that it really reflects the homes and not just another building.
Sure. And I wish I could give you some more detail. I did reach out to our investor, and he just hasn't thought that far, quite honestly. And, you know, I told him about some of those details, and maybe a little iffy, but I felt pretty good going into this meeting. And when we talk garden office, I think we think the same thing. It's going to be maybe even a little nicer than some of the facades because it's a business. So that's our intent, but what he ends up putting down, you know, it'll pass through building inspections and whatnot. So we know this investor really well. He's partnered with us, and I don't have any, any worries about what he'll construct. But I know that may not help you, but we've worked well over the past few years together, so.
Well, I know that the folks around that area, that they're going to hold you to garden office.
Absolutely. And he manages all their property too, so they're also his main point of contact for a lot of things, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 7.1, 2, or 3?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reiden Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue Inn. I'm speaking on behalf of Item 7.3. This is our, an adjustment to some zoning in our proposed Cotton Ridge development. We came to you this past August and got a comprehensive zoning approved for this quarter section of land at 98th and US 87. As we got further along into our engineering, we determined that we needed more room, I'm talking primarily about the, the commercial frontage that fronts onto the highway. The way drainage works out there, we learned that we needed more room for a drainage something that was going to be across the back of that commercial frontage, and it was going to eat into a lot of the usable depth of that commercial frontage, rendering it unmarketable. So we're asking to basically deepen that commercial by 50 foot that allows us to absorb that drainage into the back of that commercial property and effectively push the A1 zoning that same 50 foot to the west. Things happen like this when you get further along in the engineering, you just, you have to adapt, and that's why we're here this afternoon, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Terry?
Thank you.
Any questions? Oh, he's still here? All right, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 7.1, 2, or 3? All right, we will now close the public hearings. No objection from counsel. We'll take all of those items into one motion, so I would entertain a motion to approve Items 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. A second, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of those agenda items, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries seven, zero. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 7.4, and I think there may be some discussion on that, so we'll take that up separately. I would entertain a motion to approve 7.4. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All right, I will open this up for discussion. I believe we have Ms. Sager here to answer any questions. She's available for any questions for the discussion. Dr. Wilson?
So we've had a lot of stuff happening with this case, a lot of trying to clarify some stuff between our last time we looked at this and voted on it until today. You want to clarify some of the points, like the drive-through questions and kind of all of that, egress-ingress, stuff like that? Sure. So here's the site plan on the screen. This was provided by the applicant since the last meeting. It shows the three proposed drive-through lanes, two for tellers, one for the ATM, ingress and egress out of Slide Road. We did notice there appears to currently be an opening into the alley to the west, which we're going to do a little more research into. I could not find a P&amp;Z approval for that, so that is not a permitted ingress and egress. So all the traffic will be funneled onto Slide Road. We did reach out to the police department, as you had requested, for traffic.
Kristin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you pull that microphone a bit closer to the thing. We have a part-time hearing.
We did reach out to the police department to ask for traffic accident data. This quarter-mile from 70th to 73rd, in the past three years, from January 2020 through December 2022, there were 30 vehicle crashes reported. The most prevalent contributing factor was failure to control speed. We know another citizen reached out to the police department for additional data. They provided her this information. They requested a one-mile stretch from South Loop 289 to 82nd Street. There were 168 vehicle crashes for the year 2022.
And I know you can't speak to that, and if Chief White is here, he wants to come up, we had a conversation earlier today, because I just wanted to, I mean, you know, what is it, are those high? Is it normal? Chief White, you want to come up and talk about the numbers?
Could you please state your name and your address?
So the, the numbers, they are high compared, relatively speaking, compared to other roadways, especially the three-block stretch. The 168 is, is so much higher because that includes the South Loop intersection and the 82nd Street and Slide intersection. Both those intersections have a high number of, of accidents, but, I mean, it's for a three-block area for one roadway, 30 crashes in, in three years would be a little higher than what we would see in other areas.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. McBrayer?
Tell whether those crashes are cars coming in or out of, say, this location or...
Yes, our best indication would be if it was marked as failed, a year right-of-way from a private drive, that would indicate it was, they were leaving a parking lot. Most of the crashes were failed to control speed, so not stopping in time for somebody braking in front of you.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy, is that, that was the portion of the road where we had the racing incident, was it not?
The fatality accident. I, I think I would have to double-check and make sure. I don't want to give you any, any wrong information, but we've had a couple of different incidents over the past few years. I'm not 100% sure which stretch of roadway that was, but I can find that out.
So this is between the loop or the light there at, what is that, 70 something, 70th?
Yes, ma'am. 70th to the 73rd Street.
And then it goes, there's not another light stop sign until you get to...
82nd Slide, I believe so.
Thanks.
Dr. Wilson?
I was just going to clarify for Ms. Joy that that fatality was just a little bit further south. They were coming out of the park. It was a...
Right. I was thinking, so it was that stretch of roadway, but farther to the south, that sounds right?
Yeah, it was just a little bit further south from this marked point.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia, questions for Chief White?
Not so much for Chief White. You're doing a great job.
Okay, thank you.
This is just more focused on the lanes because there's still so much confusion. First, we were one lane, then we went to two lanes. Now we're two lanes and an ATM, which technically is considered a third lane. I just want to make sure because, you know, we want to do the best with the information that we have.
Mm-hmm. Three lanes total, two for tellers, one for ATM.
You think that would create additional traffic, having that third lane just for ATM? I mean, there's no way that they could adjust that, and, I don't know, I mean...
And reduce it to two lanes? I'll defer to the applicant on that.
Tyler, you're up.
Tyler Gentry, 4,576th Street. Hello again. So, so the intention here is to have a commercial lane, a personal lane, and then the ATM on the end. Obviously, we can't condense that into one with those three things happening. In general, I would say we're coming from apartment medical zoning, and so you can imagine a doctor's office, they're probably seeing more patients in every... in every hour of the day than this tenant will see throughout the day. So in regards to the traffic concern, I think this is, appears to me to be a reduction in traffic. We're not changing approaches, there's no stack going out into the street. So I just don't understand the traffic concern in regards to this user.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Any other questions for Mr. Gentry, why is up here? All right, any further discussion on agenda item 7.4? Ms. Joy?
Ms. Sager, I think you're the only one who can answer this. I'm looking at the history of zoning. I'm still trying to figure out how we ended up with a three-story building.
Yes, I researched that as well. And back in 2003, let me pull my notes, when the AM zoning was approved. When reviewing the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the first reading at City Council, the discussion is clear that the applicant was originally requesting a specific use for AM with a professional office and a bank with drive-through lanes. The ordinance does not reflect that. So council clearly did not approve that specific use and only approved the AM, it seems. But the discussion was for a three-story building with a professional office and a bank. So I'm led to believe that the permit was issued in 2005 for a three-story building based on that approval.
And there was some, there was some discussion that the doctor was living in that facility. Is that correct?
I did not see that in my review of the minutes, but I'm not aware of that.
You're not aware, okay. Well, I guess what bothers me is we just a few months ago, maybe more than a few, denied a commercial request on Slide Road that backed up to a residential area. And we denied that. And, and I understand there, there, there already a C2 for some reason. I'm not sure what that was about unless that was about the bank, sure.
So the portion that is C2A, restricted local retail district, that was approved in 1999. And the discussion at that time was the intent to put in a Walgreens, but that deal never came to fruition.
Okay. So now we're asking for a C2 so they can have the drive-throughs?
With the bank, because the bank is not a permitted use in AM either.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of Ms. Sager? Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Me, since we had, since the last meeting, how many additional folks have protested this?
We received a total of 25 responses in opposition, 11 of which were inside the 200-foot notification boundary.
All right, any, Dr. Wilson, sorry, I just saw you.
So this was new today for me. You said that they have currently been using the access off the alley, that it's open.
From Google Street View, it appears to be open, yes.
And I think Mr. Atkinson and I had a, a brief discussion last time. You cannot use from a commercial property, you can't access it from a city alleyway.
Unless the Planning and Zoning Commission grants you a waiver, which I could not find any record of.
It's been being violated already.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this time we end discussion of agenda item 7.4. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of agenda item 7.4, please say aye. All right, I count Ms. Patterson Harris, Mr. McBrayer, Ms. Joy? No? All right, Ms. Patterson Harris, Mr. McBrayer, is ayes? All oppose, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion fails to five. All right, next we have 7.5, which is a resolution accepting the fourth annual report from the Comprehensive Plan Oversight Committee. And you have that report in your backup. And with approval of the council, we also have, well, are we taking commentary on 7.5? Turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, councilwomen and councilmen. My name's John Zwyker. I'm the chairman of the Comprehensive Plan Oversight Committee. And this is our fourth annual report. I want to tell you, I think it'd be good, I'm sorry, how do you turn these?
Just use the up and down arrows?
Okay, if you'll turn, yeah, on this, if y'all see this. For some of y'all who maybe knew, just a little bit of history on it. It's the purpose of the committee. As you can see, it was formed basically about seven or eight years ago, if I remember right. It was a low point in my life at that time because the mayor and, and the city manager came out to see me and I was happy to serve on the committee, but I was asked to serve as chairman of the 40, or the 2040 Plan. Anyway, it turned out great. And in front of you is, is the purpose of the committee that you can see from there. And this is a couple of years' worth of work that's summarized on this page of the plan priorities, which was impact fees, the Unified Development Code, also the UDC, as they call it, Neighborhood Planning, the Cultural Arts District, and also the Parks Program on that. To give you an idea, you can see we've had four meetings this last year in very good meetings. We also had a lot of citizen comments, not a lot, but a number of them most of the time we were there, so we had some good feedback from that. A non-controversial issue we went to was impact fees. And you can see from that, it was passed and we are currently, in the next page you see, we've collected billions of dollars worth of fees that will be used, I think currently, and also in the future on that. The UDC, we spent a tremendous amount of time and also the city staff has the last few years. I think if you look, I think if I go to the next page, you'll see this coming April, it will be hopefully approved. And the second reading will be in March and April. So that was a monumental task that we can't thank everybody involved with that and the subcommittees that were involved with that from that standpoint. The Neighborhood Planning Program, thanks to Wilson Bowling, who's done a tremendous job of, of planning this and also implementing a lot of the things that are going on. As you can see, the, the Dunbar Manhattan Heights and the Jackson Mahon areas are also a priority that we've been working on and it's proceeding along very nicely. In fact, this is going extremely well as far as the Oversight Committee is concerned. Then the last one is the Cultural Arts District, which we're just getting into this year. By the way, this is one of the largest participating meetings we had when we did the, the 2040 Plan. And we're hoping that here in the next year, particularly a year and a half or so, that this will be coming to a head. And we can also come back here in a year, or particularly this next year and the year after, to have some good development in this arts district corridor. The planning, I think it was last, this last November, I think, I can't, if I remember, it says in here that y'all approved the Parks Master Plan, which was, we thank you very much. This was an important issue for the growth of our city, that we continue to have park plans that are, that are conducive to our citizens that are used within our community from that standpoint. So, any questions that you might have? I'd like to also tell you that the people on our committee, it's Alice Lozada, Bernie Bass, Dan Wilson, Billy Russell, who's the vice chairman under this, and Lee Ann Vines. We have one that we are trying to add to our committee. Everybody on this committee has been on this, the ones I read, for the last four years. And we really take pride in the fact that a number of us, at least three of us on this committee was on also the 2040 Plan. So, any questions y'all might have? I'd like to say that throughout this process and currently, the city staff has just done, done a wonderful job, been so diligent in all their work. We had a lot of controversy through those years and many of us are, on that committee was not paid as heavily as y'all were paid to serve on the city council. And we took a lot of meetings and, and a lot of people's come to some of our business to voice concerns about what was going on. So anyway, I want to thank the staff and all of the people involved with this. It's been great and the goals are being followed. It's, it's really rewarding to see the work that we've done. And these items, we first showed up there, those four or five items, are very important, as you know, to the growth of our city and, and help, helps in many ways to eliminate some of the time that we all spend on that. Any questions y'all might have for me?
John, first of all, thank you for your service on this and to the entire committee. We appreciate your time very much. I know that $25 a month that council members make doesn't come close to the dollars that you all were making.
Thank you, Mayor.
We do certainly appreciate you very much. And with that, I'll recognize Ms. Patterson Harris.
Thank you. Mrs. Reicher, thank, it's good to see you. You look like you've got some new hair or something, dude, but anyway.
Nah, it's just a little grayer than it used to be.
Okay, I just, I just knew there was something special about you.
Three years of the pandemic will do that, somebody in automobile business, trust me.
We are approaching five years on this thing, are we not?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any plans as you review and whatnot of really providing some extra information, additional information? And here we are now to the community, you know, we had them come in and kind of had them have their say, share and whatever, but we'll, and there's been a lot of moving parts since that time. And I know that we're kind of staring UDC, you know, down the throat as well. But in, in reaching that fifth year mark, are there plans to maybe be more public or take a roadshow on, you know, on to make sure the citizens know that that decision that was made years before, this is how we're trying to make it work and be better for our citizens and the communities?
I think that would be a great idea. Probably all of y'all on that dice is to take that up and promote this quite a bit. We'll be happy to, on the Oversight Committee, help in any way that you want to show the public on what we've done on this. It's, it's, you're right, to be honest, a lot of it's segmented, segregated into certain areas that only certain parts of the community are involved with. And, and a lot of them don't think about neighborhoods that are doing the planning and zoning directly. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea. You know, we started the Oversight Committee, but to be honest, there was also, I think, we could go back, there was supposed to be a five-year look-in on the 2040 Plan, which we kind of look at it more often than that. But I think it'd be a good assessment to go through that process. One of the things that came in that, on that five-year is to update what may have changed in the last five years that we didn't address in this 2040 Plan, okay? So I think it's a great idea. And, and anything we can do to help in any way to do that. There was discussion of starting a sub, or a committee, you know, and it may not be the, this committee, but if, we can help in any way if you want some other one to look at the plan or evaluate it again with staff, because there's a lot of changes that are going on, you know, from that. So I think it's a great idea, Ms. Harris. Any other questions?
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
You better be careful because you have gray hair now, but you may not have any more hair if you continue. But I think it's been five years and in five years, a lot has happened in this community. We've grown so fast. And that being said, if you could change something, what would you change now? Because the dynamic of the city doesn't look like when you started. And also for neighborhoods like Jackson, when we were trying to apply for those grants, it's very difficult when there really isn't a lot of city property that's owned, like there's maybe one park. So it's hard to apply for grants when there's not a lot already happening in those neighborhoods.
Now, when you're talking about grants, could you be?
The planning, yeah, the neighborhood planning.
Oh, the neighborhood, you know, and it's also capped not a large amount of money that you can get the grant for from that standpoint. I think it'd be great to, to have a, somebody look at this and update it. I don't think I might be the person that probably needs some, somebody. Yeah, younger and, and, not that, but you need some other people on it too that's gone through the process to, to update them on what's going on. But you know, we're changing so fast. We've changed, in, in, in the year and a half we did this, it changed tremendously. We had to make changes all the time on that. But, you know, when y'all think of the Unified Development Code, it's just, that's just something else. It's great we had it, we hadn't done it in 40 years, but that's changing. There's a lot of, a lot of demands by, we just saw it today on some people. And so I, I'm with you, I think it'd be good to have a look-in, but get some fresh eyes in there, you know, from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Mr. Reicher, you indicated that you have a vacancy with your group and, and that was from a resignation, as I recall.
That's correct.
What can we do to fill that spot before we make any more changes?
I think we had to, you know, tried to fill it twice. We just need to go recruit and that might be, you know, partly our fault on the committee, but we, the person that moved away that was coming in on this one, so that's nobody's fault and it happens. I, I'll help in any way. The, the great thing about our committee is that the, the six, six to seven, we've been it from day one and no other, no other, nobody else on the committee has left, which is unusual. Normally we'll have some people leave all the time. So we'll be happy to put some effort into that.
Look, we can help you.
We went, yeah, and I, we have, you know, in the past, you know, we, we tried to recruit people that maybe didn't represent to the ones we're on, the, the groups that we're on, you know, different, different areas.
Thank you, Mr. Zwyker. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Zwyker? All right, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you all.
All right, motion, I'd entertain a motion to approve agenda item 7.5?
I'm going to accept the fourth annual report from the Comprehensive Plan Oversight.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. I got a second, acceptance. We're approving the resolution, is that correct? All right, so. Correct. And we have a motion in a second? Did I hear a second? Jennifer did, all right. Dr. Wilson, thank you for the second, all right. All right, so 147 degrees up here, I think I'm getting brain fog. There's like seven heaters going on. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 7.5, please say aye. Any opposed by? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Motion carries 7-0. All right, next, we will take up 7.9, 7.10, and 7.11, which again approving the Lubbock Business Park, the Central Business District, and the North Overton Tiffs. You have that information in your backup. I would entertain a motion to approve 7.9, 7.10, and 7.11? All right, thank you. Mr. McBrayer, could I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, any discussion or any questions on 7.9, 10, and 11? Ms. Joy, you have a question?
Well, there's some information here that I think may, maybe the public would be interested in because when we talk about these tiffs, we understand they receive a percentage of the property tax that's collected within, let's talk about the Central Business District Tiff. But I guess what jumped out at me was that the total tax increment to be received by the CBD Tiff for tax year 2022 is projected to be $1,582,330 from all taxing jurisdictions, which would include the county, the hospital district, what else?
Water district.
High Plains Underground.
And then the city.
So, and it's only, and I don't think people understand this. When we adopted the, the Tiff, there was property downtown. there was property downtown, and it was valued at that time. And so the only tax that can be collected is on the properties that were not previously valued. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. When we set, when we actually, when the council designates a TIF, it has a base year, whatever the value is at the time of designation, that amount, the value for, or the money for that goes back, goes to the taxing jurisdictions just like normal. Any increase in that value is where the increment comes into play, and that will go into the TIF fund.
How old is the Central Business District TIF?
It was, I think its base year is 2001.
Okay, so we're into 23 now. So that's 22 years?
Yeah, it's a 40-year TIF. This is the one that the council opted to extend. It was originally a 20-year TIF, and now it's a 40-year TIF.
And I guess my point is that the collection's fairly limited because of the way it's set up and the way it should be.
Well, it had a high value when it was created, and that also, the good thing about Overton was the value was 26 million when we started. Now it's 590 million, and so that gives you a lot of room for actually having the money to do a lot.
You're talking about North Overton.
Yes. CBD, the value, I believe, was somewhere around 170 million originally, if I can see here. It's in the report.
Keeping in mind that we have an awful lot of governmental entities, churches, and nonprofits.
It was 105, excuse me.
In the...
105 million.
...TIF, which also has limited it, but just, I think people think it's millions and millions of dollars, but it's, but it's not.
Especially with an already-developed district. I mean, that, it made a difference for downtown because of the fact there was so much business already there. So we're only, the TIF only actually gets revenue off of the increase in value. So, and the difference between that and now is not huge.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other questions council has on 7, 9, 10, or 11? All right, any further discussion? All in favor of approval of 7.9, 7.10, and 7.11? Please say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 7.12. Council, I've handed out to you memorandum of understanding titled Exhibit A. This is to consider a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a related document in connection with the assumption of duties of Ms. Courtney as acting city secretary. This will not be effective until March the first. However, for necessity purposes of obtaining records for vital statistics, we need to get ahead of this, and so we're asking council to approve this memorandum of understanding and the appointment of Courtney as interim city secretary beginning March 1st of 2023. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve 7.12.
So...
Many moves, many moves. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer, second, Ms., everybody. Ms. Martinez-Garcia, I heard, hope you're here to the right. Any further discussion or any questions on 7.12? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approval of 7.12, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries six to zero. Congratulations, Courtney. All right. It is now 3:24 on January 24th of 2023, and city council is adjourned.